This is a call being, workshop. I'm going to ask EMS assessment team to start us off.
All right. Well, again, my name is Chris Terrell Kell and I was designated as the team leader for this EMS assessment. And I want to start out by just thanking Jeff Davis County and in particular with the agencies and personnel within the agency, not just with the EMS, but with EMA, Fire, with your account receivables personnel. We received just the utmost cooperation from each one of them. And really that began even prior to the beginning of this assessment, starting on Monday, with them submitting the documents that we had requested. It really helps us prepare for the onsite visit. So I just want to give thanks to them for cooperating with us and providing us with good information. And also the last two and a half days, I've ate better than I have in the last two and a half months. I believe I'm going to leave here a pound or two heavier than what I arrived with. Whether it's Miss Smith's restaurant up here, I mean, you go in there and you place an order and they're just begging you to take their food. They're walking around with fresh fried chicken and pork chops. So anyway, we had a really good experience here and a hospitality that was shared with us. We greatly appreciate that. So I want to just cover just some issues that were notable. Initially, we told you that we'd come back with just a preliminary report of some of our findings. It's not inclusive. There are many more issues that we're going to be addressed, both from a positive standpoint and then from a standpoint where areas we think that there's some opportunities for improvement. Some of the current issues stem from changes. And this was almost like the theme, private's coming here and then certainly throughout the duration of the last two and a half days, just seemed to be made during Mr. Eadie's tenure. And so, you know, we can't fret that. But this board has the opportunity to address some of those issues. There's something most notable of ours that we're, and I want to recognize that several medics here have long time tenure, 15 to 20 years. And I think that speaks volumes about the commitment from your emergency medical services personnel that something is going good here for them to be committed to this community, to serve this community. And the majority of the personnel that are employed here also, I think with the exception of maybe two residents of this community, we don't see that everywhere we go. A lot of communities have recruited medics into their counties to offer their services. So we just wanted to note that. And by that, I think this suggests a good operation and relationship relative to satisfaction with their jobs and the continuity that that provides within your local operation here. So, and also one of the things that we picked up on almost immediately before we got here and just confirmed it, looking at your collection rate with the performance of your account receivables, you've got excellent collection rate and your cash per transport. So we just wanted to note that. Other issues, areas that we examined was with the training and continued education. We think that there's some opportunities for improvement there. It seems to be a desire from the EMS staff. There's a requirement that they maintain their license and they have to have at a minimum 40 hours of continued education training every two years to maintain their license. So it seems that they're somewhat limited in their ability to obtain those continued education credits. They have been using just one source, which seems to be their primary source, is the Office of EMS. On our website, we offer a free EMS classroom. But because of lack of staffing that we have at Office of EMS, we have not maintained that free training website as well as we should have, but we're limited by our resources as well. So many of the training opportunities that reside on that website, some of them are a little bit dated. And that, we took that site down about three months ago because of several issues. There, it's going to come back up hopefully in September, operating on a new platform that will be a little more user friendly with availability of some newer or updated training offerings. But while I may say September of this year, it could be September next year. But that's our goal, is September this year. But even with that, it doesn't provide the adequate continued education specific to the field duties entertained within their scope of practice. So I think that that's an area that there's opportunities for enhancement or improvement upon their ability to obtain that. And we've encouraged, when we met with their service medical director, he seems to be willing to continue to provide his services. You're not paying him a fee, so he's providing these services without charge to you, as we see that in most cases around the state. But he is there at your disposal and ready to assist in areas, in particular with your continued education. And I think that he has a lot to offer in that regard and has committed to doing so. And we went over some of the responsibilities serving as a director. So our hope is, is that you utilize him to the fullest extent possible. Another area that we looked at, and we've heard this during the meeting here on Monday evening, with regard to your county personnel policy versus the EMS policy and procedure manual, they do not comport with each other and on issues specifically related to personnel. So that should be reconciled and we'll make some recommendations in our final assessment report back to you and some areas of specifics in that regard. Another area, and I strongly recommend consideration, the Georgia Association of EMS, the Department of Public Health Office of EMS, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, along with Georgia Southern University, who created, I say we, they created a Georgia EMS Management and Leadership Course. I was a part of the pilot course, which began in 2012. And basically, it consists of an eight-month program. And during that eight-month period, you spend one full week in class at a designated location. Generally, the first week is at Georgia Southern University. The next two classes will take place some other areas across the state. And then the fourth and final week is back at Georgia Southern University. So in between your first week of class, the two-month period between the next class, you have assignments that has to be completed and they're fairly in-depth assignments. But that better prepares either your new incoming EMS director and not so much just the director, his deputy director, or even supervisory levels, giving them additional tools that may not, that may not already have those skills, but it gives them the ability to be exposed and acquire some additional skills pertaining to leadership and management. Often times in EMS, an individual or medic would be promoted into a leadership position without being fully prepared to step into that position with all the responsibilities that go along with that. You know, they're generally, a lot of times we see where they're the next in line. They've been employed here for long. And so we see that those people being promoted into those positions. I'd say that that's not a good way to do that. They should be rewarded for their commitment to that service. But if they step into that position and they're not prepared for what they're going to be facing and those decision-making skills, the tools that they need that would help them be more successful, they can obtain that in this course or at least set the groundwork and they can learn more as they go. And what you gain with forming those relationships with your peers in other areas, it gives you a network of individuals. If I haven't quite faced a particular issue or a particular problem, well, I can have a group of 24 other guys because the class is limited to 25. And my class was actually 27. Robert, Robert and I was in the same class together. But now it's down to 25. So you meet 24 other men or women that you form those relationships with. And when you struggle with some of those difficult issues, well, you know who to call because you may not have faced it, but maybe they have. And so it just provides another resource to you. So there's so many areas that you can benefit from. So I strongly recommend that. I contacted Courtney Schroeder. Some of you might know him. I know some EMS guys. Courtney's like Mr. EMS and Jordan, he's in everything. I don't see how in the world he does what he does because he's all over the place. But I contacted Courtney and the next offering will be March of 2016. They do one per year. And up till now, and I foresee next year and hopefully years to come, the tuition, the cost of that program, the travel, the meals, is all covered by grant funding through the Georgia Trial and Commission. So it's not going to cost you anything other than his absence from the week that he's actually in class and maybe perhaps sometime during the work week that he has assignments that he has to complete. So calls to you is free. I strongly encourage you to take advantage of that opportunity. I don't think that they will take both your leadership positions at the same time, but just because you sent one doesn't mean that the next year you can't send another to that. We'll get that information out to you, but we suspect that the application for registering for that program, for what to be considered for that program, will come out sometime early January. We'll make sure that you get that. And I believe that you'll have a really good chance of getting a representative of the program and that will reward you in so many ways. The next issue deals with staffing and you're currently, and this is one of the areas that you mentioned to us on Monday evening, with concern about are you adequately staffed? Do you have adequate number of allowances available either for a 24-hour period? There was lots of discussion surrounding your day truck and even in our deliberations with some of the staff. That was also a leading issue there. So currently, you're staffing one 24-hour truck and you're serving about 15,000 people with that one truck. And you also have a backup truck with your on-call crew. I think as I understood, you terminated your day truck a couple of years ago. So we're going to be examining the staffing levels and we're going to provide you with more detailed information along with a report pertaining to different staffing models. Right now, you've got an unusual staffing schedule and I didn't even know that this existed. And I've done many of these assessments and got many friends and colleagues around the state. But the staffing pattern that you have here is a bit unusual. It seems like Athens County shares the same similar staffing pattern that you do. Not to say that yours is bad and you're doing it wrong, but we're going to do an in-depth review and study of that and we're going to provide you with some staffing comparison models, looking at, for example, your staffing model, the cost of that versus looking at what we call a standard or nationwide standard in EMS and Fire. Also, what we consider an APC schedule for what we most often time refer to as a 24-48 scheduling pattern where you're working 24 hours on duty and then you're off 48 hours and then you work 24 on. And so, or a 24-72 scheduling pattern where you're working 24 hours, you're off three days, 72 hours and you're back on. And some of those have a built-in call day. But we see very few areas where they still have call days, but it seems to be working good. Your staffing personnel were not really complaining about that call schedule. So, but that's not anything that we can get into the specifics tonight until we do some comparison, provide you with some data to help support or maybe make some other alternatives to you. Because that would be your decision to decide what you want to do in consultation with us if you request us to do so. And that leads me into the next thing is working up a demand analysis report for you. We'll construct a geographical presentation of call volume by time of day and day of week. And it'll be, it'll be an easy readable format that you can see so that you can determine, looking at this chart of what your call volume is on each particular day, the times of the day. Do you have clusters where you've got, you know, from 6:00 PM to midnight? You know, how many calls occurring within that timeframe? From 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM with the calls that are occurring within that timeframe? And the location of those calls and looking at, you know, your dispatch time, your response time, your arrival time, the time on scene, all of that we've included into that report. And I'll say that once the report is completed, we're not going to just send that report down here, leave you on your own. We're going to come back, we're going to present that report to you, go through the details of it at that time, try to explain it to you as best we can. You'll have an opportunity to ask questions or clarification, but we're going to continue to support you and your staff throughout this process. You know, we're going to put together this report. What I want you to get it, look at it, not be able to make a tail out of it, put the thing on the shelf in the corner. That's not going to do you any good. You know, we wasted your time and y'all wasted a lot of it. So I think that this is going to be a comprehensive report. I think that it's something that's going to be maybe like a roadmap to help you reach the goals that you want to reach through the objectives that we set forward within that report. We're also going to note operational and treatment protocols. We'll be reviewing and reporting and making recommendations in that area as well. Along with the treatment protocols, on the State Office of EMS website, and I discussed this with Ronnie and Tony, it's important that you have a standard template there to work from. And the service with their medical director, and this is one of your medical director's responsibilities, is you get onboard together so that when you respond out there, the germedics are well aware of what their treatment protocols are and the medical director has to sign off on those, even though we offer you a template to get started. Some providers take that template, they review it, they endorse it just as written. But they don't have to because each area, there's differences from an operational standpoint. What works over here in Jeff Davis County might not work nearby there. So if the medical director wants to make specific changes there that he thinks is necessary to get what he can act, he can actually do that, but the medical director has it in order to approve. And so I think that that will be some benefit to you, plus it engages your medical director also. And he's willing to become onboard. Another area, this is the last one for now, is we see that you have a kind of a flat organizational structure, especially in billing. And we'll report and present both a transitional plan to address Kathy Lord's eventual retirement and a contingency plan in case she becomes unavailable. I mean, that could happen tomorrow. You have an excellent account receivable staff. I didn't remember Kathy and I'm a little ashamed of that, but we asked her that years and years ago, this is back in early 90s. She recognized me, but I didn't recognize her. And at that time, we were attending the first of the EMS directors' management conference that took place up in Unicorn. It was a really great place to have that and it helped me out a lot. So Kathy was there during those early years and so, you know, she's grown within the organization. And when she decides to retire, we believe that there ought to be a plan put into place. Maybe perhaps it was a foster and training to have that person step up and take over the cause. As I stated earlier, you have an excellent, excellent account receivable system to collect. It was really, really excellent. So that's what we have here initially. We'll open it up and allow you to ask questions from us. Any other specifics of that you, that you want to ask us, we'll try to answer those. But this report that we're going to be delivering back to you, hopefully within 90 to 120 days, that's going to be the meat of it right there.
Well, that's what we're looking forward to the most part, of course. Any input I have is to get that dig into and see what we're doing that should be altered or where we're headed and make sure we get everything the way it should be. That's what we're interested in.
Talking about Ms. Kathy, she ain't going to retire.
Well, we talked about that too. Forty years passed before you know it.
All her people will be 150.
That's because of your excellent EMS service.
Our collection is better than ones, you know, when you go to ACCG meetings and all, have the people that want to do the billing for you. And they talk to you every year and they send you information every week, it seems like, rather than a month. And does theirs not be as good as ours? I mean, you know, when you figure in the personal salary, retirement, insurance, vacation and everything, I mean, you might be asking the question, man, I don't have to be just be aggravated with it anymore, so.
Yeah, you've got areas for improvement there. That doesn't mean that there's no areas for improvement, but they're doing a really good job. But there are some areas that can be improved to help facilitate even a higher percentage of collections there. We visit other areas of the state, you know, some are not so good, but.
With these companies like I'm talking about doing this, are they outsourcing?
Yeah, where you don't have your in-house billing, you're outsourcing it. Yeah, you know, there's a lot of, that prefer to do it that way, you know? They don't want to hassle with trying to find adequate training staff. You know, that's, that's something that you should take into consideration. You know, of course, now you're going to pay a percentage per ticket, what we call a ticket or a bill that they process, you're going to pay.
What you collecting or nothing?
That's right, each ticket. Some of them, some of them may offer up, you know, based on collections. But the ones that I'm familiar with, you know, for each ticket they process, you're going to pay a percentage on that. And for some areas, it works just right for them, you know, off of them employing their staff and, you know, maintaining the benefits and you just have to lay that out. But, you know, here, it's going quite well.
Yeah. We don't have any problems if you leave.
Well, there's, there's some issues, I mean, not issues, I mean, there's some opportunities to improve.
But you'll bring that back to us. I understand that. I figure you know more about it than I do because somebody's trying to sell you something. They tell you all their good sides.
Right.
You don't know the downsides.
Yeah, they market it and say.
Yeah, they market it and want to sell it and want it to be, I mean, in, they tell you all the stuff where you save them.
Right.
They don't say how much you're going to collect. Like you say, most people that I have taught have just got it. Every time they make a bill or you ever get opinion of it, you pay them a percentage of what they just billed. If they're collecting, they're not in a big hurry to really get it collected for you through a collection agent because they not have to get much of the money of any.
You know, if you look at, taking that into consideration, there's some reputable companies out there that are in the business for EMS billing, there's plenty of them that's been out there long enough where you can get some adequate references throughout the state or any EMS provider. And I would ask that vendor to give you a list of references. Of course, you know, they're going to give you one, they're going to say the most positive thing about them, but that doesn't mean that there are others out there that have the same program that might support their claim or may make you aware of something that you might want to be cautious about. You know, that's easily better.
You mentioned we have an odd staffing schedule. If that, I guess one thing we talked about yesterday, we really need to bring to a head because of the confusion between what I guess Mr. Reeves said and the way they had it in the past on the vacation and the way that their on-call time and all that is. Are you going to touch on that in the report or?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're just not prepared to do that. We don't have that information. Initially, being introduced to it, I think, wow, because I just never heard of that before. You know, some semblance to it, but just not quite the way that it is. But that doesn't mean that that's, that's not, not what we're going to recommend that you save.
Right.
It may be a very wrong way. But I just. Yeah, but it's just not your typical one. But the more I heard about it and began to understand it a little more, the warmer I became to it. Whether that's optimal to you, we're just not prepared to make that decision until we gather more data, do some comparisons, and then, of course, we'll provide that information back to you. And then it'll be up to you to make the decision. We're just providing you with the information that you can review it, ask questions on it, but then often make sure to decide.
Well, I've been to a lot of meetings and I've never seen anybody else talk to me about their EMS that the people that's on-call is as willing to be on-call as ours. And I mean, I really have, I mean, I know I've talked to 25 different counties. And theirs don't like them because I'm willing to do them because they'd rather go into another county and work another 24 hours part-time in another county by having the benefits in the county they end and everything, you know, where they don't, ours don't want to be on-call. You know, are you going to compare us with a county with just one shift, one person on to start with, with the way that we do in our on-call? Or are you going to compare us to counties that has two allowances and then their on-call do? How would it?
We're going to compare you to several different scheduling models. And we can look at, okay, the hours of compensation, the hours worked, the hours on-call if it's included in the call. You'll have an option, one with call, one without call. So there'll be several models that you'll be able to look at and make some comparisons there to see what best works for you, true what you're saying about on-call. When I was working as a medic, I was willing to do anything when I first got started and I couldn't resent that call. But that was just the system that I was in and the way that our scheduling pattern was and you find in a lot of areas. And it's just inherent in EMS where today we see medics that have the opportunity to get second jobs and both part-time and full-time. And from a system standpoint, statewide and nationwide, we're concerned about that. We're concerned about the fatigue factor that that presents because they have that opportunity to take, for example, compared to the way that your scheduling. And let's just look at the 24-48 hour pattern. If I come to work with you, I work a 24-hour shift with you, and then I go to a neighboring county or two counties up and I work another 24-hour shift there, I work 48 hours straight. If the call volume below and I got to sleep during the night, well, I may be okay with that. But let's just say that my wife has honeydew lice on that third day and I'm exhausted so I don't get much rest then. Now it's time to start that back over again. back over again. We're concerned about that, and have been for a long time. No easy answers to fix that. Some providers put mechanism in place to ensure that a few hours prior to reporting to their full-time duty here, they limit you from working a shift, so many hours prior to starting your primary job, and maybe consider that your primary job. And so, we see those policies in place. But I would also say that here, and there's some sort of uniqueness with the number of homegrown medics that you have, you know, they're vested in this community. They're here because they want to be, not because they have to be. This is their home, you know, this is their family, this is their friends. And so, those sacrifices that they make there, there doesn't seem to be, well, some of them have some part-time jobs also, but it just seems to be working for you here. We don't, we didn't hear a lot of grownups about it, but not everybody has.
Well, you don't. I mean, they, they, all of them don't go in actions, they go in their personal calling.
Yeah.
Because they're here. And, but, now, Acton County, if I'm right, because like I said, I've talked to a bunch, they come in, they on-call twelve hours before they come to work, they don't twenty-four before they come in. Then, they on-call them first twenty-four. Then they come in, and they work their twenty-four. And I'm trying to think, somebody I talked to, they was on the, and I can't remember which county, but it's down towards the border, on the ground where, they on, twelve hours before they come on, work twenty-four, and then they on-call twelve hours after. You don't know anybody? If it's still a forty-eight, but it's twelve or four and twelve, I can't remember who. And I, I talked to them, and that's why I said, every week you do it, everybody's got a different system.
Yeah, it is. There's uniqueness to it in County County, and the region, the region. The officer requests, anybody in the group that might comment? Well, we'll get that report to you as quickly as we can. So, thank you for the opportunity and...
I appreciate it.
Y'all, all of you, for taking the time and coming. So, we didn't know what to do, or what it was, or what about it. And so, and everybody I talked to, that's one difference. We do appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Y'all don't have a training where you can train them to stand on a truck, and press the watch pass?
Medics are trained to think on their feet, they can figure out a way.
Well, if we all wanted to think a little harder.
Yeah.
Build my crow's nest there.
We appreciate y'all, and looking forward to getting rid of them.
As Dave can speak to us about the proper policy, that would be okay?
That'd be fine.
So, they could be appreciated.
Back in April, which was very shortly after Gary began here, he and I had a conversation. He asked me some questions about proper means of providing direction to the execution of public works. Who does what, who's responsible, who can give direction? And so, I spent some time thinking about that, and then I prepared, I actually wrote this policy, which I emailed to him, and I think you have a copy of it. It is my work. It comes from my thoughts having examined what a number of counties have done around the state, and issues that I've heard raised over time. And I'll share an example. I won't name the county, but I will share the example. So, this happened in a metro county in the state, where a commissioner, a member of a five-person board like you have, went out to a public works crew mowing grass on the right of way. And he told the man, or the machine, because he pulled up, and the man who was driving the tractor got off. And he told the operator of the tractor that he needed to come to his district and start mowing grass in his district. Well, this is a gentleman who reports to a supervisor, and the supervisor in turn reports to the director of public works, and the director in turn reports to the county manager. And so, now, he's in a quandary of sorts, because he has a man who is a commissioner, who ostensibly has some authority, giving executive or administrative direction to go do something to an employee who doesn't report to the commissioner. And so, it put him in a quandary. So, the man driving the tractor called his superintendent and said, or supervisor, and said, "What should I do?" And his supervisor said, "We have a fixed pattern. Those tractors go out, we know exactly how we're gonna mow it, and it's probably been mapped out using some GIS software to show the most efficient route." And he said, "You stay on your tractor, stay where you are, follow the pattern that we've established, I'll take care of this." So then, he has to turn and call the director of public works and report what's happened. And the director backed him up and said, "No, stay where you are, keep following the same pattern, let's stick with what we're doing." And then the director has to turn around and call the county manager and report what's happened. And the dilemma that the commissioner put them all in is not uncommon. And yet, no single commissioner of a multi-member board has authority to give any type of executive direction like that. County commissioners generally, with some limited exception or policy individuals, you all sit around this table, and you approve policy, and then the policy is to be administered by this man. And then, he gives direction to the employees to go out and do thus and so, whatever the policy says. So, that commissioner attempted to exercise executive authority, which he did not possess, because he's one vote out of five. Now, if you sit around the table, you or any other commissioner that's a multi-member group, and a majority holds your hands up and says, "We wanna change how we cut the grass," then he's going, you're gonna give that direction to him, and he's gonna send public works and make those changes. So, it was with that thought process in mind, and having had a conversation with Gary, that I wrote this policy. I will not suggest to you that it's anything more than a draft. This was literally a work that I put together on a matter of probably an hour and a half, sitting in a hotel room right outside of my planet by the airport. I remember where I was at, Gary, when you called, when we had that conversation. But I, I put this together at his request to say, what would a policy look like? I think that it's a reasonable policy. It should bring some direction and clarity to the way that things are done in public works. It creates a reporting mechanism, so that you become familiar with who's reporting, who's made the request. I think that all of you around the table know that I served as a county commissioner for fourteen years, and twelve of those were as chairman. In my county, we don't have a manager, we have a full-time commission chairman. And so, it was routine for me to hear from my fellow commissioners, not just at a meeting, but during the month, if something happened, they would call and say, you know, "Ms. Jones complained about this road, could you see about it?" And we always had a work schedule. Now, some counties are more formalized, I would suggest, is primarily in some of the more populous counties, they actually have a reporting mechanism, where calls come in, and they're recorded, and they put them into a system, a work order system, so it's created. I'm not suggesting that you necessarily go that far, at least from a technological perspective. But if you wanna see a pattern, how many calls are coming in, or who's made calls, what kinds of requests have come in? Did they originate from a member of the public? Did they originate from a county commissioner? Did it originate from someone, if somebody called Wayne, and said, "Listen, in his district, call him," and then Wayne calls up Gary, who's on the public works director, and it gets recorded. But I think in terms of being economical and efficient in your operation, you probably don't want a motorator that happens to be fifteen miles on the other side of town, picking up the mow board and driving twenty miles south of town, just because it was a complaint. Now, if it's a serious issue, and that's addressed here too, I think it's in paragraph eight, if there's something that represents a threat, so if there's been a big rain, and a culvert's washed out, and there's a hole across the road that's by people's way, well, you want somebody out there pretty quick. You're probably gonna send public safety first, just to mark it, so that nobody runs in there and gets injured. But you're gonna go over and fix those things. But when it comes to routine maintenance, when it comes to those occasional complaints, you probably wanna have an organized system. I'm not saying you don't. That was represented to me back in April, that there didn't seem to be an overarching policy. I don't know if you've learned anything since then that would refute or reverse that. But this is my work. Again, I represent it only as a draft. If you think it's worth considering, please do. If you don't, throw it in trash, and I'll go home. I'm going home anyway, regardless of what you do.
Appreciate it.
But that's sort of a synopsis of the reason that I put this together.
Good. Appreciate it.
Glad to answer any questions if you have.
You have any questions? On here?
And if there are, you can later, you serve and I'll get you. Or if you're happy to speak, or email, or make a return trip, we'll need you.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
If y'all have any other demands or requests upon us, we're probably as a team, about to exit the building. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Thank y'all for allowing us to be here the last couple of minutes.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
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 We talked, sir.
Yes, we talked.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, you are a fast leader.
I'm getting there.
Anywhere, because we had, we had same certified, we should have these certified, so there's no transition.
But it's really for the public.
I need a motion.
A motion.
I need a second.
I'll say it.
All move.
None of them.
None of them. Next, I just heard from Dave, about the policy of government, public workers. Any discussion on that?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't got any problem with, with this, although, like he said, this is a draft. I would want to call it to look at and make sure it was all correct, and said the right way, because I don't know a larger language. But, and anything other than that, I mean, I'll deal with it, as long as it's pretty thorough at times.
So, she had a call for, would like a season?
For our next meeting.
On our next meeting.
I'm good, I'd say I'm good with it. I don't have a problem, I just wanna make sure it's easily correct.
I'll make a motion with Taylor.
I need a second.
I'll say it.
All move. Next, discuss banking.
The Baxley Federal, now it's called what?
Ears.
Is now gonna be called something else.
Rensselaer.
And every time they change, all the routing numbers, where our squad comes in and all, has to be changed, and it's a, it's a pain. So, we just wanna discuss the possibility that we may look into changing banks, because that's just happened so many times, as y'all all know from just the name I just mentioned. So, that's all we wanted to say, is that we, we just wanna let you know that if you have any opposition, tell me.
All we have to do is just advertise it.
We're doing twenty-six, that's right.
But we gotta keep banking down now.
So, we just wanna talk to them, and see if that'll give us kind of the same arrangement we have there. If they did, then we might consider the auto shop.
What, what, what they call them?
Interesting.
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 We have to advertise it.
Take this.
About, did he do it, I started, I did, I did.
I did.
I didn't like it either.
That's what we did.
Do you have any?
Still got more of business?
It's new, they home, they mine.
I'm sure.
Anybody got a problem with that?
I would just like to stay local.
We don't stay local.
Oh, we're just staying local.
Good luck, thank you. We're doing business within local.
They're, they're local.
We're here.
Well, I know, we're here, but...
Stay in this town.
Well, that's why I get what you mean, yeah, yeah, you're right about that.
Anybody okay with that? Is it okay, you don't want to do? We need a motion over?
Why don't we go and make a motion to vote, if that's what y'all decide you want to do, that y'all already got the authority to do it. And, I mean, that wouldn't be ours in control, and we legally. I made the motion that if the administrator, the clerk decides that we may need to change banks, because how many times it has changed names, and messed up all these routing numbers, that would give them authority if they decide to, to go ahead and put out, advertise, and put it out, and see if anybody is interested.
You have a second?
I'll say it.
All move. No? Pass? Turn.
I was like, not even here.
Seven minutes.
Oh.
Seven minutes.
Lots of different bits and halves.
Keep lying, don't lie, be this time.